Ladies and gentlemen, we are progressing swiftly to special session number two about Yonsei’s past, present, and future. Yonsei University has always played an important role in fostering global citizenship and producing visionary leaders. That has been done across generations, pioneering, cutting-edge research, and contributing to sustainable development. Today, we are honored to hear from two distinguished speakers who represent both Yonsei’s legacy but also the future.
To begin, we are honored to introduce Mr. Kyung Yul Lee, the CEO of the SCL Healthcare Group and the Chairperson of the Yonsei Alumni Association. Focusing on Yonsei’s legacy, Chairman Lee will speak about building on the past to shape our future with a focus on the history of Yonsei University, which started in 1885 with Yonhee University and Severance Medical College. He will share his insight into Yonsei University’s enduring legacy and its role in empowering students to become global leaders and the philanthropy-driven vision that continues to shape its future. Please extend a warm welcome to Mr. Kyung Yul Lee.
Good morning, everyone. I’m Dr. Lee Kyung Yul, President of Yonsei Alumni Association. Yonsei Alumni Association is composed of over 400,000 alumni all over the world. So also, Yonsei University founded in 1885, the first private university in Korea by Christian missionaries. Today, His Excellency Ban Kim Moon talks about this year’s GEF Forum motto: “Time for Action: Bridging Divides.” I like that. How about you? Today’s my talk is related with this year’s GEF Forum motto. I will explain why with my own native language. I’ll make it short.
So this is the first slide I prepared today. So names of the Yonsei University. So Yon and Seh of Yonsei. It comes from actually Yonhee College. Yonhee College. So Yon is from Yonhee College and Seh is from Severance Union Medical School. So that’s where we got our name, Yonsei. And you can see the distinct logos here. So about 140 years ago, in 1885, Emperor Gojong of the Jocelyn Dynasty, he met with Dr. Allen. Dr. Allen was a medical missionary from America. And this is Guanghye Won. Guanghye Won is actually the first modern hospital in Korea. And the building used to be lived in by the aristocrat. The aristocrat who used to live here was Hong Youngshik. He was one of the members of the Gapsin Jongbien Ku. And the Constitutional Court of Korea is actually located here. So located on where these houses used to stand. So Hong Youngshik, because of his participation in the Gapsin Ku, he became a traitor to the monarchy and all his family was basically executed. And this house was later used as the building for Guanghye Won, which was the first modern hospital in Korea. And in 1917, the Severance Union Medical College was established. It was a medical college established by many Western medical missionaries. Here, I want to draw your attention to “union.” So Severance comes from... And this is also the very first modern Western hospital in Asia. And the Severance comes from the name of the donor who made a donation to build this building. So do you... I don’t know how many of you are familiar with the story of Mr. Severance, but I’m sure many of you know about Rockefeller. And Mr. Severance was actually a co-founder of the Standard Oil along with Mr. Rockefeller. But after the business took off, he retired and he built a foundation named after his own family name and he made many donations around the world. And in 1957, Yonhee College and this Severance Union Medical School were merged together. That happened in 1957. So Yonhee University, again, this is the Underwood Building that we know now. And this was really early Western style building in this country. And year 1884 was a significant year in the history of Korea. Here, Gapsin Ku took place. So during the end days of the Jocelyn Dynasty, the monarchy was declining and there were some reform-minded thinkers who wanted to totally reform Jocelyn. So they rebelled against the king. So basically, it was a coup at that time. And it took place in 1884 and that event is called the Gapsin Ku. But what is very interesting is that one year prior, in 1883, in the U.S., America actually built the very first American consulate in Korea. So in Seoul or Hanjang, Hanjang was the old name of Seoul. So the American consulate building was built. And once they have an American consulate office here, then the Americans who are going to be stationed here and working here, they need a medical doctor. So Dr. Allen volunteered to come to Korea. He was working in China at that time, but he left his post in China and came to Korea. So that happened in 1884 September. And Dr. Allen came to Korea and three months after Gapsin Ku took place. But Gapsin Ku failed only three days later. And the actually members of the Gapsin Ku was actually Min Youngshik. Min Youngshik was a cousin, kind of a distant cousin to the then-imperial Min. And during the coup, Min Youngshik had a knife wound, a very deep wound, and he was severely bleeding and he was almost dying. But then, he got to meet Dr. Allen, who came to Korea only months ago, and he saved Min Youngshik. So the emperor and empress were very thankful. So Emperor allowed to grant one request to Dr. Allen. And Dr. Allen’s request was to build a medical institution to treat Korean people and to educate Korean people. So that was the request from Dr. Allen. And then, that’s the Guanghye Won of the picture that I showed you earlier. And later, it was renamed as Jeju Won. But basically, Guanghye Won was the very first Western medical hospital in Korea. So in 19... Excuse me, in 1885, so Gojong gave this building to Dr. Allen. And the Guanghye Won, the name means giving grace. But in two weeks, it was renamed as Jeju Won. But Jeju means saving people. So Jeju Won and Guanghye Won, if you go to the back of this building, the Centennial Hall, you can still see that their old site. And there is a copy of the old Hanok buildings. So it will be a good idea to take your time to go and see what it looked like back then. But what is important here to note is... So basically, this very first Western medical hospital in Korea were built by American missionaries. So they were all missionaries sent from America. So just to commemorate a few of them, Mr. Appenzaler, he was a Methodist missionary, the very first Methodist missionary to come to Korea, and he established Beje High School. And Mr. Allen, Dr. Allen that we’ve been talking about, he was earlier in China, but then came to Korea voluntarily. And then, Dr. Mary Scranton, she came to work at Jeju Won, but shortly after, she established Eihwa Women’s University. And Dr. Allen, he is actually quite a mysterious person. When he first came to Korea as a medical missionary, but 1890s and after that, once the American consulate was established here, he also worked as an interpreter at the consulate. So basically, he was also working as a diplomat. So he went back to America as a diplomat. So Dr. Allen built Jeju Won. And Dr. Allen later was sent to America as a part of the diplomatic delegation sent by the Emperor Gojong. So because he was going to be absent in Korea, so Dr. Oliver Everson came to head Jeju Won. He was the fourth director of Jeju Won. His nationality is actually Canada, so he’s a Canadian. And he’s from Canadian Methodist Church. And he’s a very devout Christian. But he was also a very smart person. And he also studied pharmacy. He actually taught pharmacy... He worked as a professor at the Pharmacy University in Canada and also worked as a professor at Toronto Medical University. So he was a really brilliant person. He was a doctor to the mayor in Toronto. But he also... His life suddenly changed due to Mr. Underwood, who was also an American missionary sent to Korea. So Mr. Underwood went all the way to Canada to meet with Dr. Everson. And Mr. Underwood told him about Jeju Won and the situation in Korea. And Dr. Everson really took that call and moved his whole family to Jocelyn, to Korea. And back then, all his acquaintances discouraged him. It’s a dangerous country. Why are you going there? Don’t go there. And he’s already married and already had three children. So he had a family to care for. But his youngest child, only two years old back then, had pneumonia. And it was quite serious. And here, Dr. Everson told his friends that, “If I leave Toronto, go to Vancouver, go to San Francisco, and take a ship to go to Jocelyn, but if my youngest child dies before I reach San Francisco, I will take that as a no from God. But if my child still survives, then I will take it as a yes from the Lord, so that I will go to Jocelyn.” So until his family reaches San Francisco, his youngest child recovered. So Dr. Everson went on board on the ship and came to Jocelyn. And also, his wife was actually pregnant with a fourth child. And Mrs. Everson, when they arrived in Busan City, and Mrs. Everson, upon arriving at the port of Busan, gave birth to the youngest child. And this youngest child later became the seventh director of the Severance Hospital. So what a story, what a family. So he’s a Methodist, but the Methodist Church didn’t want to send him to Korea. So he switched to different denominations. So the new denomination sent him to Korea. So he came to Korea in 1893 and he served this country for the next seven years. And he was deeply moved by the dire situation in Korea. And also, back then, there was a war going on between China and Japan. And in this war between China and Japan, China lost. And China used to be a really big power country compared to Korea. But China lost in this war. So it was quite serious geopolitical changes that Korea was going on. And the cholera outbreak took place. And he had to respond to the nationwide outbreak of cholera back then. And he had to deal with a lot of financial issues as well. So he went to the Missionary Congress in New York to talk about situation in Jocelyn, in Korea. He talked about the difficult situations in Jocelyn. And his theme was that Jocelyn... Here, Jocelyn, many missionaries from different denominations came and worked. But because they are from different denominations, they work individually. And it’s not very effective, it’s not very beneficial to the people in Jocelyn. So if we can work together across denominations and if we build really proper, build hospitals and educational institutes, schools, all together across denominations, that will be the most effective way to spread the gospel in Jocelyn. And that lecture deeply moved Mr. Severance, who was in the audience. So Mr. Severance, right away, decided to donate $10,000 back then. So with this money, this donation from Mr. Severance, Dr. Everson was given the task to use this money to build the hospital and to build the school. So that is how the Severance Hospital came into being. So it was a really important moment, this Accumenical Mission Conference in New York. So this is Mr. Severance. So he was deeply moved by the speech by Dr. Everson and he decided to donate a huge sum of money. But it was not just a one-time donation. Severance Hospital opened in 1904. And so for the next five years, Mr. Severance would donate $10,000 every year until the hospital building was completed. So in 1907, Mr. Severance left America and even traveled all the way to visit this building, hospital building in Korea. And Mr. Severance brought Dr. Lordlow, who was a really a famous surgeon back then. And Professor Lordlow came to Korea with Mr. Severance. And he was also deeply moved by the situation in Jocelyn. He decided to stay in Jocelyn and he built the surgeon department. So actually, President Yoon Dongseop would be a direct kind of successor of that legacy. And after the Severance Union Medical School was built, this is the first class of graduates of this school. So seven students graduated from Severance Union Medical School. So they were the very first students in Korea who studied modern Western medicine. And you can see this building. And this is located in Namdameun area, old Severance Hospital building. But by this time, already Korea was annexed to Japan by Japan. But the school was permitted as a Severance Union Medical College. Why “union”? Because as Dr. Everson mentioned, the different denominations need to unite together to work, to do the mission work in Korea. And that is... So because it is a cross-denominational effort, the school name has a “union” in its name. Now, I want to talk about Yonhee College. So the picture is the picture of Dr. Underwood. He was the very first American missionary who came to Korea. And along with Dr. Allen, he began his mission work in Jeju Won. So the typewriter, why am I showing you this old typewriter? Reverend Underwood’s own brother, John Underwood, he had a big, successful business with a typewriter. So he’s a typewriter. Underwood was a big success in America. So he... So Reverend Underwood passed away in 1910, but he got donation from his elder brother, who was a typewriter businessman. So with that donation, Dr. Everson bought the land where we are standing today. So and on this land, Yonhee College and Severance Union Medical School were built. So already from the very beginning, these two schools, school, tried to merge together. So you can see the badges here, the Severance badge and Yonhee College and these two badges merged together to become the current Yonsei University. And here, President Bae Nakchung was the first president of Yonsei University. And Dr. Woo Gongsan was the vice president. So because they joined hands together, Yonsei University came into being. So I’m showing you these three founding fathers of Yonsei University. Dr. Everson on the right hand. All of these three founding fathers, they were really the three founding fathers of Yonsei University. And Reverend Underwood, he came to Korea at the age of 26 and he served Korea for 30 years. And he died at 57. And Dr. Everson, he came to Korea in 1889 and served Korea for 40 years. And he served Yonsei University. And he was actually expelled by the Japanese colonial rule. So he had to go back to America where he passed away. And they left really an amazing legacy. And among their legacy is... So these are all kind of foreigners. But here in Korea, they did nothing to benefit themselves. Reverend Underwood, he would appoint... He would build up Dr. Bae Nakchung to be the president of Yonsei University. Dr. Everson had his own children. But he also picked Dr. Woo Gongsan as the president of Severance Hospital. So basically, all their hard work was to educate Korean people, to build up the next generation of the Korean people. I think this is why their legacy is truly amazing. So the spirit of Yonsei is that we need to train the next generation. And that legacy continues till today. And here, I also want to mention this. So the Korea, the Republic of Korea as we know, it was founded by our first president, Sungman Lee. Sungman Lee was also one of the students here. And we have many research institutes within Yonsei University. I highly recommend that you visit Yisungman Research Institute in Yonsei University. The reason why President Sungman Lee became so great is because he had a great teachers, Dr. Everson, Dr. Underwood. Even when President Sungman Lee was a young boy, he learned English from these people. And he was allowed to work at Jeju Won. So for example, when he was young and poor, he worked as a caretaker to the patient at Jeju Won. And also, that’s where he learned English from Dr. Everson and Dr. Underwood. There is a record for this period. So Dr. Sungman Lee, his monthly salary was actually equivalent to the mid-level or sort of high-level court officers during the Jocelyn Dynasty. So he was working Jeju Won and he was getting paid well. He was learning English. And Dr. Underwood and Dr. Everson, they all wrote letters of recommendation so that Dr. Sungman Lee was able to go to study in America. He studied in Princeton, for example. And also, the president of the university was Woodrow Wilson. So Dr. Sungman Lee was one of the last students President Woodrow Wilson taught before he became the president of the United States. So he had a personal relationship with the U.S. president. And but it was all thanks to the education from Dr. Everson and Dr. Underwood. So the spirit of our three founding fathers is basically the spirit of a union. We need to work in unity and also, we need to train, educate the next generation. So the founding fathers, they were really focused on educating the next generation Korean people. So these are still key part of our Yonsei spirit. Yonsei Universities came a long way since. And there are many global university rankings. And if you look at the recent Times High Education Institute ranking, Yonsei Universities is very high. As among private universities in Asia, Yonsei University recently became number one. And also, GIF Forum itself is a very... It’s a great forum to invite global leaders. So it really goes to show the presence that Yonsei has at the global stage. And personally, I take great pride in being part of this. And also, last week, I think this was only the fifth time for university in Asia to have a quantum computer. So last week, at Hondo Campus, we had quantum computer. Now, from now on, we will be able to have a lot of quantum research using this quantum computing. And Hondo Campus has a special focus on biotech research. So going forward, I have full confidence that Yonsei will play an important role in conducting bio-research using quantum computing. And also, there are many programs. I don’t know if you’re familiar with the Learn Us program. After the COVID-19 situation... After the COVID nineteen situation, now online education uh is much more prevalent. And Learn Us is an online education platform provided by Yonseun Program. So from anywhere in the world, you can access the platform to uh, benefit from Yonseun educational programs. And also, all freshman students at Yonseun Universities, they uh, are required to stay in dormitory in Songdo Campus for one year. So that is a residential uh program. I think that is a really a great uh, program as well. And all year I mentioned that Yonseun is number one private university in Asia and also uh, ranked eleventh in the world. So Yonseun grew so much. And this is where I work, SCL Healthcare Group. So I'm, I'm a a doctor specializing in diagnostics. About thirty years ago, doctors' diagnostics used to be very uh, subjective judgment. Uh, but uh, so it was not easy to switch to a more evidence-based diagnostic system, more standardized, evidence-based diagnostics uh, system. That's uh, what I dedicated my life to and uh, that also gives us some more tasks. For example, now AI and big data is used a lot. So we need to use these technologies to renovate, to innovate uh, medicine. And I'm sure Yonseun uh, is playing an important role in this regard as well. So Yonseun was built by these amazing founding fathers and we still carry on with their spirit. And I believe that uh, their spirit will continue to be the momentum for our future growth. Uh, the Yonseun Alumni has about a four hundred thousand alumni globally in twenty-three countries and forty, uh, excuse me, fifty-four major cities around the world. So with this alumni network, uh, Yonseun University uh, really has a global network. So uh, one of the reasons why I believe our alumni network is so important is because we want to build our future leaders. Uh, to build up our future leaders, we need resources, for example scholarship. So I want to use our alumni network and also mentoring programs. There are so many alumnis who are working actively in various fields in the uh, society. So the alumni members can meet with student on the field. Uh, so we have this, we are thinking of having this kind of program using the alumni network. And Yonseun Spirit again, this is from the Gospel of John, "The truth will set you free." So truth and freedom. So we want to uphold on the spirit of truth and freedom in our alumni activities and programs. So some leadership programs that we are running. And regarding developing countries, we also have several programs. Hundred forty years ago, Jocelyn was a really, really poor country. But even though we were really poor country, uh, many people came to Korea from more advanced countries. We benefited from their great work. So now we want to give it back to the global community. So we want to give it back to the developing countries in the world. I think our alumni network can play a significant uh, contribution uh, in that way. Uh, this year marks a hundred fourtieth anniversary of Yonseun University and a lot happened during the hundred forty years. We also had a very fast development, fast innovation. But what I always emphasize is, science and technology may develop, but if you are a Yonseun person, there is a one thing that should never change, that is your faith. Uh, I'm talking about not just our faith in God, our faith in our country, our faith in our nature, environment. So our faith should be constant. And, and this spirit of faith will be a great uh, tool for us to unite with other countries and other communities in the world. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chairman Li. This was quite a journey to the past, the history of Yonseun. And we are now moving swiftly forward. You also gave us glimpses already to the present and we segue into the future. Let's shift our focus towards the challenges that we have currently from climate change to healthcare crisis and resource instability with one technology that can alter a lot, quantum technology. It is emerging as a revolutionary tool to accelerate solutions. So let's look at how quantum technology is influencing medical advancements, energy efficiency, quantum computing, and has the potential to really transform whole industries.
To explore this further, it is our pleasure to introduce Professor Che Ho Jung, the Senior Vice President of the Yonseun Science Park Project, Dean of the Institute of Convergence Science and Technology and Director of the Yonseun Quantum Initiative. Professor Jung will present how quantum technologies can be harnessed to achieve sustainability goals and how Yonseun University is positioning itself at the forefront of this innovation. Professor Jung, the floor is yours.
Good morning. Thank you very much for the kind word of introduction. I feel privileged to have such an extraordinary opportunity to share some of our Yonseun University's vision, uh, strategic development goal three in front of such distinguished guests as Tim the Scholars and my dear friends. So today, my job is to share and deliver the Yonseun University's Quantum Initiative and some of the strategic vision, how to tackle the emerging issues relevant to the good health and well-being by harnessing the unprecedented computational capability of quantum computing. It's not an easy task. Within twenty minutes, I ought to convince you how to achieve the goal of sustainable healthcare using quantum computing by try my best. So I would like to start off with a couple of numbers here, um, related to the health issues. Uh, some, some uh, the larger that's better, but some others, smaller than better. But I uh, have attention to this uh, number two. That means in every two seconds, someone among us dies pretty much really from non-communicable diseases. But when it came to the cancer, the number is staggering. Like every three point one five seconds, someone in this planet will die of cancer. So like quantum physics, everything in this universe has a duality property. Every human being has a dual citizenship as well, uh, kingdom of the well and kingdom of the sick. But among the kingdom of the sea, cancer is the invincible dictator of this kingdom of the sea, the emperor of all melodies. So in order to fight against this devastating health condition, there have been numerous efforts, global engagement or the um, nationwide campaign um, or international collaborations. But after three decades of the Declaration of the War on Cancer, as you can see here, the white line above is a heart disease-related death. Dramatically decreased in numbers six hundred to two hundred, but unfortunately, cancer remained Plato as a public enemy number one. So undeterred, human race is keep toward pushing the boundary to understand the cancer at its root. So by taking full advantage of emerging technology of genome sequencing, now we are able to decode the uh, secret of cancer at very bottom at the DNA sequence, like a mutation toward the gene expression and the protein abundance and the clinically-related meaning of that. So get any better? Unfortunately, this is an official report from the United States CDC. And as you can see here, there is a slight decline in terms of um, average uh, age-adjusted death rate from two hundred to one hundred seventy-five, but still uh, the Play-Doh remains. So why is that? Do we need more data? So data actually everywhere. Um, just taking a look at the one uh, example of a TCGA, uh, the National Cancer Institute of United States, the Cancer Genome Atlas, actually it produced a huge number of data. It reaches a two point five petabytes. And to put this your perspectives, the one petabyte is actually equivalent to the number of two hundred twelve thousand regular D V Ds. So it's not a matter of data we have, but it's a matter of computational capability. How to extract usable and actionable information from the data is the key task we are challenging today. That means many problems around us actually can be calculable. And this era of AI, virtually every aspect in our human life are touched by the AI. And I, what AI do is actually they calculate the problems and they recognize the patterns related to the specific problems and they suggest recommendations and the classifications so that we can usually take advantage of AI in our lives to solve the problem. So this year, uh, twenty twenty-five mark the centennial of quantum mechanics. Since the born of quantum mechanical physics in nineteen twenty-five by the German physicist um, Heisenberg, uh, now the United States actually celebrated this year as the International Year of Quantum Science and Technology. So before we deep dive into the quantum computing, let me allow to walk you through with a bit of quantum literacy. So what is quantum physics? Actually, it's about a fundamental theory that describes the behavior of nature at the atom level or below the scale of atom like this. So the proton behavior and electron behavior, actually the electrons are actually, actually working at your hand at this very moment, your cellphone is actually uh, operated by the movement of electron. So here is the uh, mathematical equation describes the uh, electron movement. But rest assured, I'm not gonna take any uh, detail with this uh, complicated math. So then what is a quantum? Quantum is not a name of the matter, a physical thing, but it's a phenomena of the very nature of our universe, how was. So superposition, interference and entanglement. These three particular properties are actually related to the duality of the matter as a particle and waves. So we can take full advantage of this phenomena to calculate the uncalculable issues with the classical computer. So but still, it's quite counterintuitive. It is very hard to grieve or not hard to grieve uh, with the confidence. But here is a peace of mind. So one of the twentieth century's famous uh, physicists, Richard Feynman, said that if you think you understand the quantum mechanics, you don't really understand what quantum mechanics is. So at any rate, quantum computing harnesses the principle of quantum theory. And, and indeed, a couple of years ago, Yonseun University made the uh, visionary decision to install uh, this capability on our campus. So country-wise, it's a fifth and the universe-wise, we are the second university in the world to have this immense, immeasurable computational capability on premise our Yonseun University campus. The specification is that one hundred twelve qubits are actually running in this machine. So we are very proud of that. Uh, we celebrated the grand opening of Yonseun Quantum Complex where our uh, quantum assets reside and the by uh, uh, next to the Quantum Computing Center, we also uh, built a Quantum Convergence Research Center for all. So, so, so how big is it in, in terms of numbers and the computational capability? One hundred twenty-seven qubits. So it's a two uh, to the power of one twen- one uh, one hundred twenty-seventh is actually the uh, like the number uh, ten to the power of thirty-ninth. So imagine that, do you know how many stars in this universe? So actually, the entire number of you can calculate in this universe is actually two by ten to the power of twenty-third. So how big is it? That means the, this information can be, you know, represented and the processed by the one hundred twenty-seventh qubits eager quantum processor units in our computer. So classical bits are like a, you know, on-off switch. So it has only two deterministic information of zero or one. But with, with the diametrically different thing is, quantum computer can, you know, like a toggle switch with the sliding up and down. So it means that you can just tweak a, a knob, upside or downside. So you can just adjust exactly where you want to, you know, the light condition, intensity of the light. Likewise, a quantum computer can encode all the information like this instead of zero or one. So just, just give you an uh, example of the how this block sphere, this is actually the quantum computing informations uh, uh, the projected. So unlike two states by the classical bit, actually quantum computer can uh, have an infinite number of states can be uh, represented and processed. So with this immense capability of computation, the quantum chip actually beats supercomputers by ten septillion years in certain calculations. So quantum advantage in computation is straightforward, faster, much faster. And using the superposition, entanglement and interference of the nature of the quantum, uh, it can actually allows to do the parallel processing of information. Uh, we have an ability to solve scientific and commercial-related problems. The mostly it gives more accurate results and the less power is additional benefit. So how to harness these advantages? So every aspect of human healthcare can be enhanced by the quantum computer. But for the sake of time, I just touch on the precision medicine and drug discovery. So in order to move from the one-size-fish or current medicine toward the precision medicine, we needed to uh, divide some uh, calculations to digital types and biomarkers. So precision healthcare required detailed classification of disease at individual level. That means that diabetes you have is diametrically different from the diabetes I have. So in order to implement the precision healthcare, we need a more sophisticated classification of disease at individual level. So how many patterns can you actually recognize? This is your real patient genome analysis data I presented with the heat map. So using the state-of-the-art, uh, quant- um, sorry, the classical computer and the uh, AI algorithm, actually we can identify three distinct subtypes and they give a very uh, biologically meaningful annotations, the mesenchymal and the priority metabolism, but forget about that. The thing is actually, these two patients uh, classified as metabolic subtype. But the thing is, this narrow strip of column is the real-world individual patient. So the subtle patterns that is categorized as roughly a, uh, some subtype actually represent patient A and B. And the thing is that in real clinical world, these two patients has um, distinct clinical outcomes. One patient actually succumbed to death after the course of treatment. They failed to the uh, the liver failure because of liver metastasis. On the other hand, exactly the similar properties without um, uh, dissimilarity actually uh, survive and he happily enjoy his life. So in order to realize a precision healthcare, uh, we need uh, reliable and precise pattern recognition. And I would say that implementing precision medicine is nothing but clustering. And I would say that implementing precision medicine is nothing but clustering and classification. It's about the calculation. So the question is how to identify patterns from complex data structure that are statistically significant, biologically meaningful, and clinically relevant. So quantum can help using superposition, entanglement, and interference. Actually allows us to recognize the sort of patterns in this such a huge data space. And this is the, the, the proof of a concept use cases in quantum, quantum computing in precision healthcare. So computation is a modern day stethoscope. So using this new computing paradigm, actually we can revolutionize the computational capabilities across disciplines including precision healthcare and wellness and biomedical research. So I just finish off a couple of numbers again. Three billion, five hun- five thousand four hundred seventy-five and four. Actually, these are numbers in drug discovery nowadays. Three billion US dollars. And the researchers have to dedicate themselves for over seventeen years only for the success rate of four percent. So does it make sense? Are you ready to pay this amount of three point five US dollars for one shot of a drug? Because this is a cost of innovation our human beings have to pay? So there is a R and D paradox in drug development and discovery. Unlike other industrial sectors, the more we do research and the drug price goes higher than ever before. But that is why we need some of the thinking paradigm changing. I don't think it's affordable and sustainable. So then why is that? Why this huge number like a three billion US dollars and seventeen years of researchers' efforts and needed? And obviously, these numbers are actually reflected, entirely reflected on the price of the drug because there is a huge amount of resources paid for developing one drugs. So there is a computational challenge. So likewise, as you can see here, if we do a protein dynamic simulation, even the supercomputer requires the month of calculations just to simulate the microseconds of protein dynamics. So like government agencies, United States NIH, put a lot of money to support computational power to simulate the dynamics of biological macro molecules like a protein folding and protein interactions to identify new drugs to treat our patients. But when it comes to the quantum computing, the molecular simulation is a kind of a model term of the quantum because it's a very natural and the natural information processing actually expedite and accelerated the process of drug discovery. Likewise, genome analysis by quantum computing is the same. So researchers in the United States, they align together to utilize, take a full advantage of quantum computing to assemble and analyze the genomes. Now the genome, the language of life. To my perspective, the grammar system of DNA is a quantum mechanical. So to conclude, quantum computing has a potential to revolutionize healthcare research, drug discovery, and treatment accessibility. By harnessing the pinnacle of human intelligence, it's a transformative computational capabilities can help us to bridge the divides between current healthcare challenges and future solutions, ensuring sustainable and affordable global health and well-being. With that, I would like to stop here and thank you very much for your kind attention. Thank you.
Thank you so much for this very interesting lecture on quantum technology.